We thank you for making each of us in this room, every person we meet, every citizen of the city and every city in your own image with dignity and affinity worth. We thank you for calling you and you have given every one of us to be good stewards of the creation, to love our neighbors as ourselves, to thank you. I thank you so much tonight, Lord, God, for your servants, our mayor, our city manager, our staff, our city staff, and our city council members and our first responders. I thank, I give thanks, God, for the way of service you have chosen to take up on behalf of all of us here. We all come to this room tonight as complex humans, beings carrying burdens, carrying joy, hope, trust, that you alone can hold us together, oh God, in your loving peace. Help us, Lord, to trust you more and more than the fears and our wounds and even our accomplishments. May we learn to lean on you and your everlasting arms tonight. God, in your word, you make it clear the expectations for those who sit in place of authority. Through the prophet Jeremiah in chapter 22, you remind us that our blessings come on kings who defend the rights of the poor and needy, because it isn't, isn't that what means to be a Christian? We remember the apostle Paul writing to the Christians in Rome and in his teaching that those in authority are first and foremost our servants, that they honor you in doing their work for this beautiful city and for its highest purpose. That portion of power they enjoy is given but can be taken away. And so we pray that you would be glorified tonight through the decisions of the city council. We pray that we would see with eyes of how our lives and our connection and how we can commune with one another in good help, to uphold and listen and respond to those vulnerable among us. We pray that your kingdom could come in Kingsburg as it is in heaven through your power, working power, so powerful, defending the Kingsburg, oh God, through this government body. We pray for wisdom, for strength, and for courage to do what is right and good for all citizens. May we put the interests of others above our own. May we act with love for our common good. May we be good neighbors and recognize their image in very person here today. We thank you again for this city council, our mayor, our city staff, and our first responders, and all those who worked to make this place come home such a wonderful place, the great city of Kingsburg. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, with which we stand.
Oh, yes.
One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, Lord, yes.
Thank you, Dean. Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. This is our regular city council meeting for September 4th. Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Sullivan.
Present.
Councilmember Callamar.
Here.
Councilmember Denver North.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Mayor Chris Sullivan here.
Here. Next is approve the agenda, entertain motions.
Make motion.
Section.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Under presentations and informational reports, we have none. So at this point, we will open for public comment. This provides an opportunity for members of the public to address the city council on items of interest within the public, to the public within the council's jurisdiction and which are not already on tonight's agenda. It is the policy of the council not to answer questions impromptu. Speakers should limit their comments to not more than five minutes. For items which are on the agenda this evening, members of the public will provide an opportunity to address the council as such item is brought up for discussion. Do we have any members from the public that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, we will close public comment and move on to the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and include a recommendation from staff and shall be acted on by one motion of the council. If a council member requests additional information or would like to pull an item for discussion, that item shall be pulled from the consent calendar and acted upon separately. A motion to approve the consent calendar is deemed to include a motion to waive the full reading of any ordinance or resolution on the consent calendar. Tonight, we have items one through five. Do we have any members of council that would like to pull any items from consent?
No.
Any members from the staff or from public that would like to pull any items? Okay, seeing none, we'll entertain motions for the consent calendar.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Pass this, thank you. Next, we'll move on to our regular calendar. Item six, the Laurel Street Dog Park Improvement Update. Presentation by City Engineer Dave Peters.
Evening, Mayor, members of council. Just a brief update on this project. This is an updated rendering of the project. Just as a reminder, it's going to include a, so the dog, converting the basin to a dog park includes a path around the entire upper bank of the drainage basin, landscaping. There's a play area with play equipment for dogs. There's some parking improvements for handicap, to provide handicap stalls. There's some shade structures and a bathroom. Go to the next slide, please. You previously awarded the contract, the Donbury Construction, a little over a month ago. During that award, you awarded the base bid in alternate A, which did not include, which included the park infrastructure and the bathroom, but did not include lights or the shade structures due to budgetary constraints. So in the meantime, staff has identified some alternate equipment, solar bollard lights, solar area lights, and an alternate shade structure that we actually have worked with the contractor and are going to be able to afford within our budget and add into the project. So, next slide, please. This is just showing you the alternate lights that we've selected and just kind of a idea of what those lights will look like when they're on at night. The area lights, we've been wanting to go solar on these types of lights for a long time, but they've been, the technology has improved a lot lately. So you'll notice all of the solar panel and the battery, everything's included in the head of the light, so you don't have the box on the side of the pole, you don't have the separate solar panel. And these should give us similar light output to a regular street light. So we're excited to give these a try. Next slide. In terms of the shade structure, the shade structure on the left is the original shade structure that was in the contract that went out to bid, and the ones on the right are alternate shade structures that we've identified that are a little less costly. The one on the left installed is eighty-four thousand dollars, and the one on the right installed is about twenty-two thousand, so significant savings there. They're similar in that, you know, they both have two posts and the dimensions are the same, so they'll serve the same function. The ones that we've selected are a little bit more plain, but they're definitely, you know, commercial type shade structures that should last a long time and serve the project well. So just an overview of the schedule, work is going to start on Monday. Begin with grading and then move on to the underground utilities. Then they'll place the hardscape and work on the parking area, and then construct the path and the lighting improvements. And then lastly, will be the servicing and the play equipment, and then the irrigation and the planting will finish the project. So we're expecting to be done by November 8th, which makes me happy because that's about time it's going to start raining. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Council discussion?
Mr. Peters, I didn't see, okay, so the shade structure specifically, is there like a warranty, like a two-year warranty, or how does that work?
Yeah, I think they're five-year warranty. They're, you know, they're certified by UL, by ASME, and they're ANSI certified. The steel is powder coated, the tarp is ten-year UV resistant. So, I mean, they're definitely commercial, you know, municipal rated type shade structures. They're just not as fancy as the one on the left. The one on the left's kind of a Cadillac.
I didn't see that on the spec sheet, but that's good.
Yeah, I can provide you the entire spec sheet, I just, yeah.
Okay, and then the bollard lights are to go around the entire trail?
Yeah.
Or just in a portion of the trail?
No, no, they'll go around the entire trail.
Okay.
Yeah, we were able to, I think the light itself's about two-hundred-and-eighty dollars and then the foundations, you know, another hundred-and-forty or something like that. So we were able to get quite a few of those all around the walking path.
Okay, thank you. I think further.
I have a question on the lights that are on the left.
Yes.
Those are the ones that will be inside the park and around?
Yeah, those will be around the walking path, yeah. And then the, the one on the right will be over the parking area, the parking stalls and then near the bathroom and over the, like, the little play toys that the dogs use.
On looking at the ones on the left, did you consider, like, dogs are going to be bumping into them, biting them, like?
Yeah, they're made of-
For sturdy?
Yeah, they're steel.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, they could bite them if they want, it might hurt.
The lights on the left, Dave, you said the little solar panels on top, the round area?
Yeah, on the, on the very top.
Very top, okay.
Yeah.
Sounds good, thanks.
And the batteries are supposed to last ten years in each light, so Daniel won't be out there changing the batteries.
Yeah, right.
It's exciting.
Do we have any public comment on this? Come on up.
I just have a question.
Come up, so everybody can hear.
Chris Peterson, for the record. The bollard lights, okay, Laura asked if they're sturdy, that's a good point. What about urine?
They're not aluminum powered, so I mean-
Okay, I mean, because dogs, you know-
If we could do a test, but, yeah, I don't know.
Well, now that would make a great picture. We could have the city councilmen testing and-
It probably at some point requires a minimum-
It says aluminum body satin block powder.
See, I couldn't see that. Okay, well, I just, you know, dogs are going to be dogs, so. Because I just think, I don't think, yeah, who wants to clean up their dog?
That should be okay for a while. Yeah.
Do we have any other public comment? If not, we'll bring you back for the final council discussion. No? Okay. If nobody has anything else, I think we'll move on, that's informational only. And we will move, thanks, Dave. Move on to item seven, the city solar project update by Public Works Director Daniel Galvez.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Here to give a update on the solar project. Just to remind the four locations that are getting solar, well site thirteen, sixteen, police department and Public Works, well sixteen is at Erling Park, and then well thirteen is on Tenth Avenue, just north of Nelson's there. Next slide. And so all of, all of them pretty much have the same update, but I'll go through them. So all of the plans have been submitted and approved. We have got permits issued for thirteen, and we do have steel ordered. And I'll give an update on the proposed start time later on in the presentation. So well sixteen, this was the last permit that we did receive, so we did submit all of the permits at once. We got a request from Jazz, who reviews our plans for us, and they did have some additional questions for site logic. They did provide the sole report for the panels, and we did receive approval and get the permit issued on eight-thirty. We have had some landscaping installed along Scanston. It actually happened today. It's been a long time coming on our end to get that installed. There's still some additional work to hap, that needs to happen in between the two basins along the alley and on Scanston. It'll receive some decorative grass along a concrete area between the fence, and then we're going to be doing some ivy later on, probably about a month, month and a half, we're going to be installing it in there. So ivy's a little sensitive. Like I said, we're working with Belmont Nursery to find some ideal planning times for those, to get them thriving in time for the springtime. Next slide. Police Department also had the plan submitted and approved, got the permit issued on the fourteenth. The steel has also been ordered. We do have some additional work that needs to happen here in the month of September. We will be removing the majority of the trees and nearly all of the landscaping at PD for that installation. After the installation's complete, we will be installing some drought tolerant landscaping there at the police department. And then finally, the Public Works yard, also plans were submitted and approved. We did get approval on August twenty-second, but we are still working with PG&E and looking into the PG&E fleet program to see if it'd be a viable option to have them cover some of the cost. The steel has been ordered for that location as well. The EV charger connection's not going to impede anything, any of the steel or anything being ordered, the panels being ordered, because that portion is not changing. Next slide. So when will construction start? So once we get the receipt of the steel, like I mentioned, it's been about two weeks since they've ordered it, so we're looking at another eight weeks or another two months. They are anticipating to work at multiple sites at once, most likely the well sites and PD, and then leaving the Public Works yard for the last. So once that happens, like I said, we'll make sure that we provide you guys an update that construction is starting. And then happy to answer any questions.
Council discussion?
You said that all the mail's been ordered?
Yes.
Okay, and you said the first, the first one you're going to start on is well thirteen? Was it thirteen?
Probably both of the well sites, thirteen and sixteen and Police Department will probably all happen at the same time.
Okay, so when do you project that the solar panels will be going up?
They're anticipating construction taking sixty to maybe seventy-five days between getting it all installed and getting everything commissioned out.
Okay, thank you. Do I have?
Daniel, I have just one quick one. Are all the tie-in, the electrical tie-ins, are those all underground or above ground?
For-
Like into the PG&E?
It just depends on the site. So like at the well sites, they're localized to the area where the, where our connections are at.
Okay.
The Public Works, you know, there are some transformer upgrades that need to happen, so those are going to be above ground.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, fair enough, thanks.
Thank you for taking care of the landscaping over at well sixteen before, before the construction starts.
You're welcome. Yeah, it's been, it's been past due. I think we were scheduled to get that in, I think, in April or May of this year, and happy that we finally got it done.
So can we go back to the Erling Park? So on that one, I know obviously we had a lot of community input on that, that I think they came up with the ideas for. Walk me through, you know, we had a complaint today about the landscape on Scanston that's getting put specifically along Scanston. What, what are you planting there on Scanston?
So we did plant African ferns. It's similar to plants that are already existing there on Twenty-third, so if you kind of visit the well site, if you look at these corners, those are the type of plants that are there. They're hardy, they're tolerant, they grow tall, we can top them without affecting the plants. So those are the ones that we installed on Scanston. And part of the reason we did that is we did remove a lot of dead landscaping in there, the trees, and just brushed bushes that were existing. And like I said, in talking with them and the issues that we were having there, like I said, we got that recommendation with Belmont to install those, and they recommended those being hardy and effective of what we wanted to accomplish there.
So then at that, let's call it the median, where it's going to be on the others, from the opposite side of the alley, on the other side of where the water-
Yeah, so up here.
Yeah.
And so there, there are some challenges there. So in the middle of the basin, and I'm sorry that you guys can't see there, but in the middle of the basin there, there's a concrete area, there's no irrigation there. So we are going to put an artificial type looking grass that's going to go there, but on the sides, we're actually are going to have plants of ivy, so my staff will be installing and repairing some existing irrigation to make sure that those continue to grow.
And that's my only concern with it, is when we talked about this project, I feel like the residents were good as long as that landscaping was up and existing prior to the panels. But now, here we are, and we're going to be receiving steel, putting up panels, and landscaping's not going to be in that center area. Like it, as it grows on Scanston, it's going to grow, but that center part specifically, I have concerns. How long is it going to take that ivy to actually grow?
So the, so kind of going back to that middle piece, the middle piece is the part that's concreted out, except no way to kind of really put any real landscaping in there, which is why we're going to put like an artificial turf covering on it. Like I said, we got the order confirmed. Like I said, I'll make a provider, a future update and kind of show you guys what that's going to look like, but we're expecting that to ship up within the next month and get that installed. So that middle piece that will kind of cover the majority of the view will be installed before that ivy grows out.
How long, how long do you anticipate it taking for that ivy to grow?
We're hoping that within a season. So like I said, we're working with the nursery to provide us with some, with some good input on getting some plants that will really thrive in that area, so.
I just don't know that that's really what we agreed upon with the citizens, was getting the ivy done after the solar.
Definitely.
You know what I mean? That's, that's a concern that I have with that, is if we're prioritizing the installation of solar, I think that what we agreed upon was putting the solar in once those things were ready and started.
I understand.
And so if that's the case, I would almost consider looking into doing well sixteen last, so that it, there is time. I know that that's an expensive well, but I think that was kind of the community compromise that we came up with. So if we can maybe put Public Works above well sixteen as far as priority until we can get that landscape exactly where it should be as we committed to it.
Okay, I mean, it's something that we can definitely consider and work with the contractors and also, like I said, working with, with our nursery that we're working with to see if we can get something established a lot quicker there as well.
Okay.
Is there another option that would cover it quicker than ivy?
Like I said, the, we're considering a couple different plants. Like I said, I think that they want to actually even come out and look at the location to kind of see where they're at with it, because like I said, we were aware that, you know, was something that we wish we would have put in early in May, and it's just something that we just didn't move on, so.
Yeah, even if we change the landscape, we change the landscape, as long as it's something that's as we, as we promised, you know?
Definitely.
That's going to cover it before there's those panels.
Definitely.
So, any other council discussion on that? If not, we'll open up to the public comment. Do we have any members of the public? Go ahead and come on up, state your name.
I'm part of the public you were talking about. So when we talked about this, there wasn't any real discussion from my recall of landscaping going up on Scanston that would completely block our view of the ponding basin. But they planted stuff today that's going to completely block our view of the whole ponding basin. My recollection was we're going to, we're going to landscape the center between the two ponding basins, and really, we're good with that. The trees that they planted are like the ones right down from Denver and Laura's house, those are god-awful trees that just make a wall of blah. I talked to the guys today, they said, well, they're going in. I said, okay, so I called Daniel, he's got, your guys are great. He had a nice conversation with me. But really, trees that are going to be ten feet tall and block everything along that whole side? There's some nice bushes there now, and they took some out, and that's great, but we don't need a wall of greenery there. And I was joking with the guys, and I said, well, they'll be gone anyway, because I can take care of that, but I don't do that. So give me a break. Keep the, keep the median landscaping between the two ponding basins? Really, it's me, my wife, no one else looks at that. Olivia's door doesn't go quite that far, or Alexis's door, and the people on this side, their door is beyond that anyway. So it's truly us. And now, not only can we not see the ponding basin across from us, when we look this way to the green, nice part, we're going to see a wall of that stuff, too. And I'm not trying to be difficult.
No, I get it.
I'm just trying to let you know my perspective, and if you're doing that to make me happy, it's don't.
Is the, the shrubs that you're talking about that got planted today, are those on just the half, half of Scanston? Just the half where the other ponding basins?
So there's, there's a nice bush on the end, then some stuff that was old and they took out, and which is right in front of our door, and they planted four of them there. Then there's another nice bush that's, you know, they're this high. Then they planted four more of those on the other side. Then they went down further and planted, I don't know, five or six more. So it's going to be a wall like it is down from Denver and Laura's house, and that's just not pretty. And I know they may grow great, I'll adopt it. I'll take care of it. I'll plant some stuff in there, like the Tuckers did around the corner.
Yeah.
But I, I don't want, and it's, I'm going to be dead before it's a wall, but someone's going to live in that house, and they, that's not, that's not the best move.
And next to the Schut's house right there, I agree, they're overgrown and not maintained. Daniel, can you, is that something to where those have to grow to ten feet tall? Because they, they're really not maintained, they've just kind of ran wild?
Correct, so I mean, those, those things are hardy enough where we can top them basically to any height.
Can they be topped at like four feet?
Yeah, they can be topped at four feet. I mean, it's just something that we're just going to need to stay on top of, but it's definitely something that's doable.
And if those are growing quickly and they're making this great wall, is that not something that we can put in that middle area as a barrier?
So the thing on, on that location, like I said, it's, it's ones that we can consider, we just need to fix the irrigation along that back end, because they disconnected that irrigation on that port of that basin, so.
As far as I'm concerned, you can take those twelve plants that they planted today and move them over there.
For sure.
I'm happy with it.
As long as we have irrigation.
And honestly.
Well, and we have a sponsor now for the whole thing, so whatever the cost is.
I don't-
And he'll maintain it, I hope he'll say that.
Hey, I do my own labor, though, so I'm cheap. But honestly, if you take care of that middle divider, and I don't care if it's a year later, just, we watch the birds come in in the fall, we watch the ponding basin all year. That's part of the ambiance of my house, and I don't want to look at an ugly wall like I see on the other side. Honestly, I love you guys, but in five years, it's not going to be a big deal. The solar's going to be going strong, and nobody's going to listen to me. And I can guarantee you that's what's going to happen, because I only get one vote. And right now, I'm a happy guy, but I'm not going to be a happy guy if I can't, if I can't enjoy my home.
I appreciate the comments, and I do think you're right. I mean, I walk by that park almost every day.
Sure.
And I know exactly what you're talking about, right next to the Schut's house, those, it's just, it's a ten-foot wall of unkempt green. So I, your concerns are not unheard on that.
Thank you.
Yep. Bring him back for a council discussion? Okay. Let me see, is this an action item?
No.
Information only?
Information, yeah.
Okay, it's information only, thank you, Daniel, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, item eight, the revenue collection report for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. Presentation by City Manager Alex Henderson.
Good evening, members of council. Abby, if I could just, I can have the, yeah, that'll work. Yeah, no worries. Discussion this evening is just to give you an update on our received revenues from fiscal year- Uh, this discussion this evening is just to give you an update on our received revenues from fiscal year twenty-four. Um, just by nature of uh, how the timing that we receive revenues. Um, we just finally received our final receipts at the latter part of August. And so now I, we have a full report to provide to you this evening. Uh, so first we're going to talk about non-sales tax, uh, which is our major general fund revenue source collection. Uh, you'll see there breakdown, a five-year breakdown, uh, property taxes, uh, motor vehicle license, uh, license fees, transient occupancy. Transient occupancy is the bed tax. So, uh, Fairfield, Motel Six, and then, uh, we have some Airbnbs as well that also pay into that. And then our permits and fees, which are related to development. So, uh, well, also related to if you do a tenant improvement on your house, a new single-family residential, any commercial projects. Um, so you know, the new Starbucks just opened up. They, they would have pulled permits last year, uh, be part of those permits and fees that you see there. So you can see the year-over-year change there, uh, each year, uh, dating back to twenty-twenty. Um, property taxes, um, motor vehicle license fees kind of go up, um, a little bit each year, um, somewhat capped by Prop thirteen. But then also, uh, as we add new housing in there, you'll see a change there, um, as they come online. Transient occupancy, um, we saw a spike in twenty-twenty-two, which you'll see some, something similar, uh, when we get to the measure E portion as well. Starting to see some of that, um, flatten out, um, different reasons, um, for that. Some of it based upon coming out of COVID and how much people were traveling, uh, how much money they had available. And then, um, we also had some development over in that area, the T-Mobile and things like that. And we had some, um, uh, they had a lot of tenants over there. Excuse me, a lot of rentals over there while they were, uh, completing that tenant improvement. So, uh, just for twenty-three, twenty-four, uh, we did show, uh, just, just shy of a seven percent increase over the previous year. Uh, you can see the big portions in property tax and, and voter, uh, motor vehicle license fees as well. Uh, the other two were, uh, pretty similar from the previous year. And if you just look at the major funds and the percentages that they make up, you can see there, uh, we'll get to measure E, uh, shortly. Uh, obviously, uh, measure E is not part of the general fund, but it is one of the major funds and is a set aside. So we do, uh, include that as part of this presentation. But, um, uh, other than that, there you can see, uh, our sales tax, um, property tax collection are relatively similar. Uh, in terms of our, our overall collection year-to-year. Uh, it's a little bit tougher to see here, but this is just a month-by-month breakdown. Uh, this is the Bradley Burn sales tax only. Um, so again, this is non-measure. This is point-of-sale, uh, sales tax, uh, that we receive each year, uh, by quarter. Um, uh, pretty flat, uh, but, but not negative. So that's a positive. We, uh, we were getting projections from our third-party sales tax consultant that this number would go down this year. Um, I've had a couple of other, uh, businesses come online, uh, I think that have helped to fill in some of those gaps that, that they were anticipating. Uh, the reduction on, uh, obviously you can see a big spike year again in twenty-twenty-two, um, from the previous year. Uh, but again, our, our numbers over the last three years have been relatively consistent, which is, uh, obviously makes it easier, easier for us to budget, um, uh, for the long term. Uh, this is just a bar graph, uh, of the same numbers there. So you can, you can kind of show, uh, what that looks like. You'll, you'll notice that quarterly, those numbers are higher. Uh, the reason for this is the way that sales tax is collected and then ultimately distributed back from the state. Um, each quarter, there's, you know, essentially a true-up, um, that's done. So you can see in September, uh, December, March, and then finally for June. Uh, and we receive these amounts roughly, each of these amounts roughly two months after their, um, uh, the, the sales have been completed. So our, for our June amounts, our final, uh, amounts were received, uh, just, uh, just in the middle of last week. And then, uh, looking at, uh, measure E, uh, you can see again, uh, in fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, the bottom number there, that was our, our peak year. Uh, we have seen reductions the last couple of years. Um, um, some of this just be contributed to, uh, major purchases, I would say. So for example, uh, I think people were buying more, more vehicles, uh, in this year, in these years. And, uh, while we don't have any, uh, auto dealerships here, uh, when it, uh, you purchase your vehicle, you pay a sales tax and it's attributed to where you live. Uh, so point of destination, um, uh, sales tax. So we've seen some of those sales have, have fallen off. And then, um, and while online sales are also captured here, uh, they have been a little bit, uh, they have been less, uh, um, in the last two years. So those are probably the two major contributors there. Uh, real life impact of that, as you can see, the difference between this high end here of about two-point-seven-five million to about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars less. So, uh, we did leave, uh, we did not replace one of the police officer positions, uh, this past budget year. Um, we, it was, um, we had a vacancy and we just haven't filled it right now. Um, so about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, uh, attributed to, um, loss of revenue. Uh, and again, a similar chart, um, showing what, uh, measure E, uh, does month by month. Uh, and then you, you can just look here, uh, in our, uh, sort of our major funds over the last three years. So you can see, uh, relatively stable numbers for our Bradley Burn sales tax, our property tax collection, uh, motor vehicle license fees, slight increases. Our TOT have been, uh, relatively stable as well. And then licenses and permits can be more volatile. Obviously, it's just based upon development, which, um, can be impacted by the economy. Um, you know, we had, uh, probably the, the reason for this larger spike here was the number of single-family houses. And then we had some larger commercial developments. So T-Mobile, uh, things, um, in, in those, in that fiscal year. Uh, whereas this is more of a, um, probably more of a standard, uh, for the last couple of years and what we would anticipate for the next year or two at least. Uh, that concludes my report, but I'm certainly happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you. Uh, council discussion? Any questions? Awesome. Uh, do we have any public comment on this? Okay. Seeing none, one last chance of council discussion for anyone? Perfect. Thank you. It's informational only, so we will move on to item nine. City council compensation, presentation by assistant city manager Christina Windor.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor Purcell and council. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. Um, my presentation is regarding city council, um, compensation. Excuse me. Um, salaries for council members have remained, um, relatively stable since, um, two thousand and two. There was a small increase, um, from the rate set in two thousand and two from two hundred dollars to two hundred and fifty dollars. For city council members and two hundred dollars to three hundred dollars for the mayor. Uh, at that time, it was still a hundred dollars per month below what the state law would have allowed Kingsburg to adopt as a general law city in nineteen-eighty-four. Um, the city of Kingsburg is a charter city, not a general law city. Uh, but that was just for comparative purposes. Um, a summary of comparative salaries for council ma- council members in neighboring jurisdictions is included in your packet. Uh, those numbers were collected in the last, um, two months or so. Uh, recently, the, uh, California League of Cities sponsored a bill, S Senate Bill three-twenty-nine, which is applicable to all general law cities. Uh, Kingsburg became a charter city in nineteen-ninety-eight, um, that identified relevant reasoning for providing, uh, fair city council member compensation. Um, there is a quote from Senator Dodd who, um, introduced the bill. And then, um, Governor Newsom, I'm sorry, Governor Newsom, um, signed the bill, um, on June twenty-ninth, two thousand and three. Uh, the bill allows cities a one-time opportunity to reset city council salaries to take into account inflation. Uh, the work done by local government officials and the need to ensure that people are not discouraged from seeking city office due to low pay and the high demands of office. Uh, the salary increases or the reset is based on each city's population side, size pursuant to SB three-twenty-nine. The new base pay amount for city council members in cities with populations of up to thirty-five thousand dollars can be up to nine hundred and fifty dollars a month. That works out to be, um, eleven thousand, four hundred dollars per year per city council member. And that would be an annual total of fifty-seven thousand dollars inclusive of all five council member salaries. Assuming you, uh, decided to increase your wages to that amount. Um, given Kingsburg is a charter city and not a general law city, uh, we are not beholden to SB three-twenty-nine. However, the reasoning and the purpose of the bill is still relevant for our council members. Um, as such, uh, staff is presenting, or staff presented this information to the finance committee on August nineteenth. And the committee recommended that we provide, um, a presentation, uh, for council tonight. There are three potential options for council tonight. One would be to direct staff to prepare an ordinance, um, to update city council compensation. Um, it would take effect at the beginning of the new year after all, uh, council members, uh, take office in December following the November twenty-twenty-four election. Option two would be to provide no direction to staff, um, or to direct us not to prepare an update. Um, or option three would be to direct staff to provide more information at the next council meeting. Um, given the timing of when the increases are allowed, um, council would need to direct staff to adjust salaries. Um, for a twenty-twenty-five effective date, um, by the October second, uh, council meeting. And we would have to have a second reading, reading of the ordinance on November sixth, twenty-twenty-four. Uh, included in your packet is the ordinance that outlines council member compensation. Um, a salary survey or compensation survey. Uh, you'll notice it's not a total comp survey. Uh, we did not include health benefits and, uh, a lot of other fringe benefits that some cities receive. All of the comparator agencies that we used in the employee compensation study are included in this list. And then there's just a few other regional cities that we included as well. So there's a few more than what we looked at for the employee compensation study. Um, Kingsburg is highlighted in the middle. And the reason why there's the two is because there's the council member compensation and then the mayor compensation. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. So we'll open it up for council discussion. Awkward topic where we're talking about our own pay. Council discussion. Anybody like to go first?
Can, can I go first? And I just, I want to get clarity first. So, Cr- Christina, on these numbers, these are pre-other cities. Um, before the SB three-twenty-nine, not post. Like so, other cities didn't already increase their salaries. These are pre-SB three-twenty-nine, correct or no?
So these, uh, numbers are based on a recent survey. So, um, the bill passed last year. Um, however, many cities are probably in the process of a, of looking at it at this time. And because it has to be tied to the election to take effect after council members take their seat. A truly realistic snapshot or comp study would be, have to be taken for January one, twenty-twenty-five. However, if you waited for that timeframe, you would have to wait until the next election cycle to implement a reset. Based on my understanding of how the bill was written.
So specifically of that, I, I brought this up with some of the group at the council governments. I think that a significant portion of these are looking at reassessing, but these numbers, it's accurate for what it was prior.
Yeah.
Okay. Because if they enacted it post this bill, post the, uh, three-twenty-nine, it wouldn't go into effect until next year anyway. Because it has to take place at an election cycle. So this number is going to be accurate for the previous election cycle with twenty-twenty-four. These numbers could all change. And I don't think this, again, this doesn't include any of their alternate compensations for healthcare or anything else, correct? It's just straight pay.
Correct. It's just straight pay. I did include, um, cities that have unusual compensation, like additional pay when there are special meetings. Um, and the city of Sanger had a four-hundred-dollar auto allowance. That's considered a payroll tax benefit. So we included that one as well. But non-payroll benefits like cell phone allowance and health benefits were not included.
Okay, so. Um, this, this one is awkward, right? Cause it's our salaries we're talking about. But personally for me, I've always enjoyed the fact that this isn't a huge salary, right? Where people do it for the money. I think there's a lot to be said for the purity and why we all do this for the community. And a lot of it is volunteer work. Um, when you look at how many hours we put in, the zine, you know, with community members. Um, spending time, uh, reviewing documents, spending time with staff. Um, and all the, all the committees that we, we all participate in. Um, but that being said, I, you know, I have a hard time with personally with, you know, giving myself a raise. It's kind of a weird thing for me. Um, but I understand that inflation, if you look at inflation, that number two-hundred-and-fifty back, you know, in two thousand and two. That's a significant nu- number going forward as inflation, you know, has increased. And, um, we all have worth as well and, and I understand that. But it does become like a principle-related thing for me. The purity versus, you know, the, the financial aspect of, hey, inflation's going up, everything's going up. Um, and we, we spend a lot of time, and the big thing is we spend a lot of time away from families sometimes. And that you can't put a monetary value on. So, um, yeah, I, I mean, I'm having a hard time with giving myself a raise, but I'd be curious to see what the other council members think.
You know, it's not just a race for you though, Dave. That's, one of the things that's talked about is it's part of this evaluation is, it's not just an evaluation of self. It's an evaluation of your, your period of also.
Sure.
It's a hundred, you're a hundred percent right. So it's awkward. I'll, I'll wait, but it is an evaluation of all, everyone, not just us.
I, I know, um, being on council for almost eight years, it has come up a lot. Um, the very first time I was on council and the conversation about the compensation compared to, like you said, the time away from our families. Um, but not only the time away from our families, like the cost, because we are paying out of pocket for a lot of different things, whether it's gas, cell phone. All of the other things we know that are also taking away from our family that are not covered in, it's, it's not equal to the two-hundred-and-fifty. Also, time off of work with our careers. We're all working, um, and looking at how that impacts, um, families also. But when it was brought up, it was never the right timing. Um, because of economy or just different things with the city, it wasn't. One of the last times it was discussed, then COVID hit. And so I know it's been put off a lot. I looked at nineteen-sixty-six, they were making seventy-five dollars. I went and looked at what was the cost of bread? What was the cost of milk? What was the cost of a mortgage? And like, what would that be in today's day? And that's, it's significantly different. I think that many of us are blessed to, um, and I mean, we're called to serve. That's, that's why we're doing this. And I don't think that anybody would question that because many of us have been doing it for a lot of years. Um, but there could be other people that would want to run in an election. Like Brandon and I just ran unopposed. So would there be other good people that would want to be on city council also? That would not be able to sacrifice like part of their family's budget to do this job. So that's something that I was thinking about.
Yeah, I'll go up. Yeah, Laura, you're right. You, I've been on council now six years and it, it has come up, you know, over the years. Uh, when I first ran for council and six years ago, two thousand seventeen or eighteen, uh, to be honest, I didn't even realize that council members got paid after I was elected. And then they're like, oh, yeah, you get a two-fifty stipend per month. I'm like, oh, great. You know, that's good. Didn't even realize that. So, you know, I didn't, I didn't run for council for the money. That, that's true. Uh, Didn't even realize that. So, you know, I didn't, I didn't run for council for the money. That, that's true. But, you know, being on council for six years. There are times where, you know, I'll miss a day, I'll miss some work time for to go to a, you know, meetings during the daytime. And I'll say, I, you know, I won't take vacation time. I'll just take the time off work, you know. So that being said, I mean, two fifty does help. But there, you know, inflation is a lot higher nowadays. Like you said, what seventy five dollars in nineteen sixty six and here we are, what fifty years later? It's two fifty. It hasn't gone up that much. I mean, and now with this new bill, I think it's the right time, you know. It's the right time if we're going to do it for the council. And I don't think we're, if we do it, we're going to get a significant, you know, give ourselves a significant raise. I, you know, I, I wouldn't, I'm not doing it for the money, you know, like, like David says, I'm here, I'm doing it because I want to help out citizens of Kingsburg and, and serve my community, you know, and help make the decisions to keep Kingsburg, Kingsburg and, and the way, the way we love it here in Kingsburg. But if we're going to do it, now, now is the time to do it. Definitely with this, was it S, SB two thirty nine or something? Three twenty nine, yes. Yeah, so. That's what I've been thinking here, yeah.
I'm, I struggle with this. I do. And I, I agree with David. I'm, I'm here. This is a I look at it as a volunteer role, but that's for me personally, because I can appreciate what you said, Brandon, about this isn't just about me. This is about, about my peers here. But I also struggle with, we just got a revenue update and our measure E is down and we're not filling a job. So, you know, it's hard to look at how it's impacting the city, especially with finances the way they are for us to be taking an increase. So but I'm, I, in all honesty, I, I am, I do struggle with, with this.
So for me, I, I don't, I don't know that I struggle quite as much with it if I'm being transparent. Simply because we've established that none of us are doing this for money. Every single one of us ran for office. Four of the five of us have ran for office multiple terms. Knowing that you're not going to make money. I'll be honest, I lose money every single year to significantly. With the amount of time that I have to take off work and everything, and that is what it is. So anybody that's going to say that I'm coming up here looking for more compensation because I want money, good luck. Look at the last four years to commit me to the next four years. It's untrue. The reason I don't struggle with this is because I really look at it like us up here on council, it is our responsibility to assess the pay of employees and that includes ourselves and our peers. So for me, I look at it and I say, is two hundred and fifty dollars a month a fair compensation for council member Laura North who is coming up on her third term? It's absolutely not. Is it fair for council member Smith on her second? It's not. All of us, it's, it's just a not, it's not a fair amount and we weigh that based on whether or not the city can afford it and we can. You know, us saying that we don't want to take the money, that's a personal choice. If you say you don't want to take it, you're welcome to donate it. But I also think that if we're being completely transparent, there's a political aspect to that. You don't want the optics of not taking the money that you know you're entitled to. So I, I struggle with, I struggle with it from that perspective, that a no is really a political no more than it is seeing the value in your peers' time. We've all done this. We're all going to be going out of town for a week. We're taking time off work for a week. That costs us money. There's no extra compensation for that. It is what it is. And I look at it like the our, our peers are very much worth this. And, you know, SB three twenty nine, that's the, that's the spirit behind it is to assess the value. And to kind of bring it up so that it's less of a political conversation. I get that there's going to be members of the public saying, oh my God, these guys increased their pay. So be it. So be it. Because that's exactly what is happening. The same as we looked at, should the fire department get a pay increase? Our job is to look at what they do. They're not doing it for the money. They don't make enough money for what they do. Police, Public Works, everybody. It is a calling, but it is our responsibility up here to look at that and make it fair and accurate so that you have good people in the future. And part of it for council up here is it needs to be fair. It needs to be appropriate and it needs to be something that would never preclude someone from doing this job if they feel out of their calling. And at these amounts, it does. You know, council members, North spoke to, we're, we're all pretty fortunate that we can afford to be up here right now. But we're all not going to be up here in twenty years most likely. So what does it look like for that next group? Are we setting the foundation? And with three twenty nine setting limits. You know, I'll be the first one to say, let's just continue with the trend. We were a hundred dollars below it before. I say we just keep with a hundred dollars below it, the same as it was before. And that's going to be a significant pay increase. And I'll be the first one to completely openly admit that is a huge pay increase. But based on that three twenty nine, we do the same as it was before, a hundred dollars below what their tolerances are for that based on our city population. And that, that would be my recommendation, but again, just, I'm just, just one vote on it.
So what are you saying? Like eight fifty for council and nine for mayor? What?
Just a hundred dollars below because with the previous bill that we were following, we stayed a hundred dollars below what the tolerance was for a city of our size. I think that with the introduction of the new bill, we stay the exact same. It's a hundred dollars below what the tolerances are based on the state bill. I'm assuming that the state bill came up with that based on inflation. I haven't done the numbers. If anybody's done the numbers on inflation since two thousand and two, let me know. But that, that would be our recommendation is to stay one hundred dollars below what the tolerance is according to the state bill.
If I may. I'm going to take issue with maybe one of the things you said and the fact that this, it's a political move to that, you know, maybe Stacy and I want to stay at the same rate and not, you know, increase it. I don't, I don't believe that to be true. I think that's Stacy's kindheartedness that wants more money to stay in the city. I think that's my thought process also. I don't think, well, I know for a fact that I'm not doing it for reelection. Okay? I know for a fact that that's not it. I think I'm okay with the two fifty and everybody here has more worth than that. I understand that. But I love the purity of all of us doing what we do for not a larger paycheck. And that's where I stand on it. And I appreciate your comments. But I'm going to agree to disagree maybe on this one. And we, yeah, we all have more value than probably what we're getting paid for sure. I agree with you on that.
I appreciate that and I apologize. Those weren't directed towards you and Stacy if that's the objection to it. That was really just kind of thrown out there that there is a political pressure to say no. Maybe I, I'm just speaking for myself.
Okay.
But the reality is I, I think that there is a little bit of an optics of anytime an elected official is saying, pay me more. It's, it's not fun. So that wasn't directed to you or Stacy, so I apologize if I came across something wrong.
I agree with that. I mean, if you think of our other careers, like we would go and tell our boss, this is what we're worth. This is, you know, when we're talking about a raise. It wouldn't be uncomfortable. Like you know your value. So it does make it uncomfortable because we're elected officials and we are not going to a boss to make that decision. So.
We can open up for public comment if anybody from the public wants to come up and talk. No? So then we'll bring it back to back to council for any other alternatives or any, I mean, anything at this point. I think this is kind of our time. If we're looking to do it one way or another, I think we have to give staff a little bit of a direction so that they can rewrite the ordinance because we have, we have to have two public carings with the ordinance if it's changed, correct?
Correct. So if you don't want to make a decision tonight, we can bring it back at the next meeting. We will have to bring an ordinance following that meeting.
There's one other thing that I would like to consider. I don't know if it would be the same as this, but I know that all, I believe all other city employees and worse city employees get a life insurance benefit that it's not like a high cost to the city. Is it twenty five thousand dollars?
All employees have fifteen thousand dollars in life insurance and it's three dollars per employee. Once you're sixty five, it reduces to ten thousand dollars. But the cost of the city is three dollars per month, per person. Okay.
You have a question, Christine? So you said with SB three twenty nine, with this population of our city, it was nine hundred is what the
Nine fifty.
Nine fifty?
Nine fifty, okay. And Brandon, you said you were proposing like a hundred dollars under like what they did in the
Yeah, it, it seems like we were a hundred dollars below that initial bill. So just maintain it to be the exact same as the same hundred dollars below the, the new SB bill.
That's new SB bill, okay. I forgot what she had said what it was. Okay, thank you. That's my only question.
Any other council discussion? Okay, so I guess this would be a action item or is it just a direction to staff? Just a direction to staff. Do you have a clear direction to give? Do you want to come to a conclusion for staff to move forward? The amounts, amounts if any?
What you proposed? So what would that be?
Eight, eight fifty.
But the mayor's is different. So would that be eight and eight fifty, eight fifty nine?
I mean, I guess it's up to you guys. Whether the mayor continues to get paid more or not is up to you. I it's up to you. It doesn't, it doesn't matter to me. As far as whether or not there's, there's a separation of those. I think back then there was maybe a little bit more. I think it's fine if the mayor gets paid the exact same as council, especially if we're going to be raising it, dropping towards all flat across the board. I guess that would be mine, my recommendation. So does anyone else have any interest in killing it or moving forward with a different amount? No? Okay. So staff, do you want to bring forward something with those amounts? That'll go to a vote for ordinance, right? Because we're not going to vote on anything tonight. It would come back at another council meeting?
Correct. It would come back at another council meeting. Via ordinance.
Do you want staff to come back with an ordinance that identifies a specific amount like the eight fifty and then you can vote on it at that point at, at the next meeting?
Do you have another direction you'd like to go?
Personally, I, I mean, I, we're going to probably agree to disagree, but I think eight fifty is steep. I mean, I that's, it's, I mean, I don't know what the difference is, but I mean, to run the numbers, but that's I, I just can't see taking that big of a pay increase away from our city and our staff. I just, for me, I can't, I can't see it. I mean, I I'm fine with the two fifty, but that's just me personally, so.
So you recommend just no, no increase at all?
That's correct.
Do we have a different amount? Do you guys want to?
CPI on seventy five dollars where we started nineteen sixty six is seven hundred and twenty eight dollars and ten cents. I mean, we looked at the cost of inflation.
Do you guys think staff can move forward with a different number? This is our time.
You said CPI was, would be seven hundred?
It says seven twenty eight, ten.
I mean, I'm fine with that CPI number. Yeah. You know, seven, seven hundred, seven fifty, it's fine.
Yeah, that, that's completely fine with me.
No, it'd be like a really reasonable way.
Yeah, to do it.
I get it. It's a, it's a steep pay increase. We haven't had one since oh two. Even that seven hundred is a huge pay increase, but a little bit of it is we're, we're having to eat, eat that pressure because since two thousand and two, nobody else has adjusted it. So it is what it is.
I think, I think seven hundred is a good number. Seven even?
Yeah, seven hundred. Okay. So staff direction, come back with an ordinance for seven hundred dollars? And then we'll vote on it at that point.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we're good on that. Move to item ten. The twenty twenty four water rate study request for proposal, presentation by Public Works Director Daniel Galvez.
Good evening once again, Mayor and Council. Here to discuss twenty twenty four water rate study proposal. So the city recently solicited proposals for a water rate study to determine how the city funds the administration, operation, maintenance and capital replacement. And improvement of its water system. So the Finance Committee did make a recommendation to send that RFP out. We put that out in early July and accepted them through the end of July. We did receive one response. Which is typically not something that's ideal. But the response that we did receive was from L N T. They are the same consultants that we utilize that are more, most recent rate study for our solid waste. So their proposal did come in at twenty nine thousand eight hundred and forty dollars, which is within the budgeted amount that was approved at our recent budget. The, the rate would include the following, a detailed cost analysis, a determination of current and future revenue needed to provide water services, an assessment of the existing customer service fee structure, an exploration of various options for changes to the rate structures such as meter fees, conservation fees, bulk water usage, et cetera. And then recommendations for communications for the utility rate payers. So the recommendation is for council to approve and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement with L N T. We are looking to get this implemented if everything goes as planned, July first, twenty twenty five. With the initial information come in or the, the majority or at least the draft come in by December of, of this year. I'm so happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Council discussion?
Yeah, when did you say that, that they would come back with the, the numbers?
So once we, if we, if it's approved today, then we would give the go ahead to L N T. Yeah, they've already, I think, agreed to the terms of the agreement. So we would execute our portion of it and then establish a timeline, but we're hoping to at least get an initial draft. We've, we've had preliminary discussions to get everything, at least the draft going by December of twenty twenty four.
What council discussion? Do you have any public comment on this? Okay, last chance of council discussion. Okay, so this is an action item where staff is recommending that we authorize the city manager to complete the negotiates and execute the agreement. Is it correct? Entertain motions for that?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Under our future agenda items, we have none listed. Does anyone have anything that they want to do for future agenda items? Okay, city managers report?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, just an update that we are anticipating beginning to do the pavement markings on Draper Street starting this Friday. So portions of the parking will be closed this Friday from five AM to roughly one PM. Travel lanes will be open. And then they will return on Monday, the ninth to complete the crosswalks and centerline pavement markings. So we'll be communicating that with the bid in the chamber. And everyone to hopefully, that should basically, besides very, very minor things, put a bow on the Draper Street project. So there are some rough spots from the slurry seal that we are communicating with, with the contractor about, but for the most part, as people use it more, drive on it more, it will, it will smooth out over time, even more so than it is now. But happy to answer any questions.
Bike lanes are going in also?
The bike lanes are going in. There is, I don't know if they'll do, do you know if they're going to do the green yet?
We're still, we kind of got an updated schedule very recent. So we are working the details, but most likely they're going to go in on Monday. So maybe not the green, but definitely the, the bike lanes will go in.
One thing is there, we are looking at just doing green underneath just the Yeah, one thing is, um, there, we are looking at just doing, uh, green underneath just the arrow marking, so it won't be an entire full length, uh, of green as we've discussed in the past. So I've seen that done, uh, in other cities and trying to get it to match kind of the green that's on Golden State as well. It is the same pavement marking contractor that was, uh, that did Golden State, so, um, we are, we are in conversations with them on that as well.
Thank you. Uh, council reports and council committee reports, starting with council member Sullivan.
Oh, thank you. Uh, so I have a couple of items, um, economic development meeting tomorrow, committee meeting tomorrow, um, at one thirty at RPS, and then the, uh, Kingsburg Healthcare, um, district meeting is also tomorrow at three PM here in this office, our chamber. Thank you, that's all I have.
At three? It's early, it's at three, it's earlier?
Three, that's correct.
Mayor Porton Pelamore?
Public Safety Committee, we've not met, it's our last meeting, nothing to report. Planning Commission, we meet next week on the twelfth. S K F, we meet next week on the twelfth. And other than that, uh, a couple of weeks, was it last week or the week before, we went to Al, Alexandra Mercado's, Mercado, how do you pronounce it? Mercedes, yeah, Mercedes, thank you. Her fundraiser in Tulare. Brandon and Laura also went and it was interesting, especially when they were doing the auction. Some of those items go for the people that are bidding, bid a lot more than what they're worth, but, you know, it's a fundraiser, so. Yeah, anyway, it was interesting, we talked with some interesting people and had a good time, so that was, that's all I have.
Council member North?
Bid met yesterday and they thanked, thanked the city and also Public Works for everything downtown. They said that the communication for everything on Draper was excellent. They appreciated all, all of your hard work and it's looking great. They did ask the question about the striping, um, so you just stated that. They wanted to know when and if it would be closed, and they appreciated the ways that you communicated on social media and everything. So, um, they did ask for that, so that's something you, okay, perfect. And I think that was it. Yeah, I think that was it, that was the main thing. Uh, chamber meets next Tuesday at seven AM.
Council member Smith?
The Finance Committee will meet on September twenty-third at five PM. Community Services met last week and we had an update on the inclusive playground. Um, the update that we received on the dog park was made last week at the meeting. And finally, we had a discussion on the park master plan that's going to be starting. And the next meeting will be September twenty-fifth. That's it.
Thank you. I don't have anything to report, I, I did want to apologize to anybody that's online, we started a little bit late just because we had some internet issues. So, let's, I'll have a report. Does anybody have anything else before we wrap up? Okay, if not, we'll adjourn tonight's council meeting, thank you.